Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 7th, 2016 Meeting of the Murvisboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of the October 19th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have three public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is zoning application for approximately .36 acres located along Greenland Drive and Old Last Cassis Road to be rezoned from commercial local to PCD Greenland Liquor and Wine. Evan Kermar Patel is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider zoning change at the property located on North Side Greenland Drive. It's also located along Old Last Cassis Road. It's identified in orange on the maps that you have before you on the screen. This property is a fairly small parcel. It's .36 acres and it's currently developed with a quick sack gas station, which I think we all can agree has seen its prime come and go. And so the folks who have been operating that gas station for several years had the opportunity to purchase the property, and so they now own it. And they wish to redevelop the site. They've expressed a desire to have a liquor store which is not permitted in the CL Zone District. And so the staff suggested that if they wanted to move forward, they should move forward with a planned development approach. And so that's what the application is before you. The title of the book is the Greenland Liquor and Wine Store. This PRD program book also includes a list of uses that would be allowed because there would be space, of course, for a proposed liquor store, but there also would be a smaller flex space. And so the planned development book identifies those uses that would be allowed and then specifically prohibits some uses. It was important to staff that they eliminate some of the uses that I have listed in the staff comments, but particularly beer or packaged beer. It's not as important now that liquor stores can serve some beer. But we didn't want a beer and tobacco store to be right next to the liquor store here on this corner. So beer and tobacco are eliminated as uses, and of course various other uses as well. This property is located, as I mentioned, at an intersection of Greenland Drive and Old Last Cassis Road, right across from MTSU. You can see the MTSU Property Zone College University. The surrounding properties to the north and to the west are zoned CL as Local Commercial District, and across Old Last Cassis Road, this property is zoned RS10. There were some uses that I also expressed some concern with the works section that the applicants have eliminated from the list of uses, and that's, of course, wrecker service and wholesaling and other types of uses that weren't appropriate. So those have been eliminated. There was also some conversation about the what type of signage would be allowed for this use. And they have, of course, committed to meeting our sign ordinance standards concerning temporary window signage. A neon sign would fall into the category Temporary Window Signage, and our standards say that it cannot exceed more than 25% of the first floor windows. And this building will be a two-story appearing building, although inside it'll only be a one-story, but to give it some size and volume, it will be two-story. So 25% of the first floor windows excluding doors and 15% of the second floor windows. And they're not permitted to have any outline lighting. Neon lights that don't blink or flash are considered temporary window signs. And then the PRD process or PCD process allows the applicants to identify exceptions from the zoning ordinance that they may need. And so when we looked at the site originally, they had proposed just reusing the building, which was something that staff did not recommend. And then they proposed a design where they would push that building to the back and keep the same sort of layout. And so we encouraged them to go further, to do something more creative, and take a look at the Boulevard, which is located on Middle Tennessee Boulevard and Main Street, and mimic that sort of design because this is right across from the campus. And it is an area that while we're studying our comprehensive plan, we're calling a student village. And so we want, of course, this will be a catalyst for redevelopment. We want to set a good step forward. So they have pushed the building closer to the street as we've asked, and they've added the tree wells and the hardscapes. And because this lot's so small, they have reduced some of the side yard setbacks, which staff wasn't uncomfortable with considering that the adjacent properties are commercial and not residential. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is representing the applicant. I'm going to invite him to the lecturn to present to you the plan. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. My name is Clyde Roundtree with Hulston Steel Engineering. Chairman Lam, fellow commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to kind of present this project. This has been a work in process, working with city staff really closely, and I'm really excited about the product that's come as a result of all the interaction with the team that's involved. The owners are represented. I'm representing them tonight. They'll be available if there's any questions specifically for them as well. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, it's had kind of like three different lives. The first life was taking the existing structure and trying to kind of repurpose it in a sense and upgrade it, make it look more relevant to today's architecture. That was denied originally. And then the second opportunity was to go with a more, a newer structure, but to go ahead and leave it in the same location. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, really, the city staff has really encouraged us to try to bring all the structures forward. And knowing there's been a lot of there's a lot of potential activity on that particular intersection. So knowing a little bit about the projects that are happening adjacent to this particular piece of property, the same thing is being encouraged for the structures to come forward. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, much like the Boulevard, you know, have more of a streetscape type of appearance and have good proximity to the road and be pedestrian friendly. And candidly, putting the parking behind the building is probably more attractive from the MTSU campus. So with that in mind, I'll just walk through the site plan. And I just, I have the landscape plan. It's a little bit more illustrative. As far as it's concerned, this is the building that's in question, and the proposed building is about 3,000 square feet. And as we mentioned, everything in front would be more of a streetscape oriented type of look. We're going to try to do our best to coordinate with MTSU. They have a whole streetscape type of palette as far as their the way they treat their handicap ramps and the scoring and the concrete, what have you. So that's in process. Actually, this whole intersection has been addressed by the city as a possibility for MTSU to do a joint venture and really enhance the whole entry point for the road as well, for Last Cassis. As I mentioned, all the parking is in the rear, and a rear sidewalk has perimeter landscaping, but as Maria mentioned, the side yard's going to be smaller just because of the overall impact of the site. We'll still maintain the two entry points off of Greenland and off of Old Last Cassis in order to keep the flow. That's existing. That's kind of how it flows right now. And as far as the actual structure, the majority of the traffic will enter from the back of the structure. And so that'll be our primary entry point on the backside. Although we'll have an entrance at the front, the majority of the activity is probably going to be coming in from the rear of the building. And as far as the building's concerned, it's, these are just conceptual graphics, but they just really begin to talk about, much like what the Boulevard's already been presenting to us, as Margaret Ann mentioned, more of a two-story type of look facade. And it's going to, it's a little bit interesting with the graphics because it's really kind of has three fronts, in a sense. One right up against Greenland, one against Old Last Cassis, and one kind of catty corner. And that's what's represented here. That will be the primary entrance. The entrance that's actually catty corner between the two roads. It'll have a two-story type of appearance. A lot of signage on each of the two facades facing the main roads. Maximum height will be 26 feet. As you can see, kind of window structure, awnings, all brick, brick front end, rear sides as well. The only thing that happened in the process is right now, as I mentioned, the building's about 3,000 square feet. The owner wants to reserve the right to have a little bit of that percentage, maybe about 900 square feet, that potentially could be set up as another type of business potentially in the future. Right now, it's going to be used for storage. They need all the 3,000 square feet. But if their business model changes, that's where all those exceptional uses came in, that if that ever became something other than the liquor store, it can't be a tobacco store. It can't be something that'd be an objectable use. So with that in mind, this is a real brief presentation, but this is kind of where we've gotten to at this point. I want to commend the owners just because they've been very flexible through this process, very much wanting to work with the city and understand the implications, the significance of the lot and the location. I know Gary in particular has been just wanting this building as been something that's been kind of one of those buildings you kind of know about and you want to see gone. And I'm glad that they're willing to go there. So with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. I'll be glad to respond to anything we get during the public hearing in terms of response community. If there's any questions that are for me, feel free to ask.
Another use coming into the expanded area, would that have to come back for us since this is a PCD?
No, sir. They're actually setting it up where it would have a separate entrance. If they don't take all that space, they could have other spaces. There's actually in your packet a list of uses that are prohibited, prohibited, but they could actually sublease to one that's not prohibited in the packet. Liquor store would be naturally permitted, but there's several items that they had submitted to us that would not be permitted in that.
Page 11.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Roundtree?
I have one other question, Mr. Roundtree. So on page 10, the landscape plan and what you were showing us earlier, I mean, is that the extent of the landscape plan, or is there something more detailed that you all reviewed?
We would get something more detailed at site plan level generally. This is a concept plan.
Okay, so this is all required for the plan.
And it lets us know if there need to be any exceptions to any of our standards. And so, of course, some of those exceptions are the front setbacks because we pulled it closer. And then normally, most of our design standards are designed for more suburban type areas, not something that's so walkable like this is. And so we require a band of landscaping around the front and then the parking. And so we just use this to know if we need to write in any exceptions. Because once a planned development, you can't get variances. You have to put it in the book. So as far as now, it's general enough to meet our needs for zoning. But if you have questions...
I'll need details later. Okay, that's what I wanted to check on.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go into the rules that we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing, ask you to come forward to the microphone if you'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. Please make all your comments to the planning commission. Keep all, excuse me, keep all your comments to no more than three minutes because we have other people that'd like to speak as well. And if you have questions, we'll make note of your questions and try to get the staff to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. So all that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time on this matter.
Good evening. I'm Michael Heineman, H. Michael Heineman Architects, and I'm representing Pradeep Agnawaltri, who owns the property surrounding this parcel. Mr. Agnawaltri is traveling out of the country and asked me to speak on his behalf. He has assembled the property, the entire block, with the exception of this one parcel. And let me note ahead of time that he has attempted to buy that parcel as well. So we have a, we had an interest in acquiring the entire property for a master plan. That is not, that's not up to this body to decide. That's between the property owners. His concern, however, as the owner of the property adjacent to it, as this plan proposes, and I know the, I understand the popularity of bringing the building up close to the front, but he has recently done the subway building next to it, which now will be sitting back quite a bit behind this building. So bringing this building forward hides his fairly new building. As we potentially would be redeveloping this site, also concerned about the access to and from the two, the multiple parcels. So his concerns are as an adjoining property owner in that respect. The intention, long term, with the redevelopment of the property would be a mixed-use development with residential above. The idea of having the liquor store in the corner is not particularly attractive to our client, but that's up for you all to decide. I just wanted to voice his concerns and mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Heineman. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Questions by members of the planning commission? Hearing no questions, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a brief comment, and then I'm going to make a motion. My comment is, you have to look at what's there to appreciate what this is. And it's a very, very attractive plan that they've got for this property. It's a very good use of the property. Moving the buildings closer to the roadway will technically slow traffic down along that corridor, hopefully. It generally has that effect. So it's a very good effect on the traffic flow in that area. Nobody can argue the fact that the Boulevard has dramatically improved the appearance of Middle Tennessee and Maine. And that's basically what this is doing. I eat at the subway that was referred to just about every day. And I do realize that it's prob, I've looked at the situation and see how it's going to be set back a little bit, but I don't think it's going to be so far back that it's going to impede their visibility from the roadway in any sense. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Eddie. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. The second public hearing tonight is an annexation plan of services and an annexation petition for approximately 9.1 acres located along Rucker Lane. Jerry and Chris Pavis are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lam, and good evening, members of the planning commission. Our next public hearing tonight is an annexation request located along the west side of Rucker Lane. It is on the map in front of us, if we could pull that up. You'll notice that the property is colored in the turquoise color, and also included in the annexation study is approximately 1,500 to 1,600 linear feet of Rucker Lane right-of-way. What we thought when we were looking at the study area was if we annexed just the right-of-way in front of the study, or in front of the requested parcel, it would leave a gap in between where the Publix is and the requested parcel. So we went ahead and included Rucker Lane all the way up to approximately Publix, as well as down to the edge of the Scottish Glen subdivision to the south. So kind of fills in a gap of Rucker Lane that is, that is in the unincorporated county right now. The requested parcel is 6.3 acres. It's mostly undeveloped, although in the southwest corner of the property, there is a single-family residence and several outbuildings. I had a conversation with a neighbor who was concerned about a business being run out of the, one of the outbuildings on the property. The applicant, or Mr. Bolden representing the property owner, has indicated that it's not a business being run out of there, but there is a, he does work on cars as a hobby. So that's what the applicant has informed me. So that the current use of the property would be that of a single-family residence with several outbuildings on the property, as it's been indicated to me. The total right-of-way of Rucker Lane is 2.8 acres, bringing the study area up to 9.1 acres. The plan of services is included in the agenda materials. It indicates that the city will be able to provide, be able to provide services to the subject property upon annexation. There's a zoning request, which is next on the agenda. However, this first public hearing is simply for the annexation. So just to give the members of the audience a heads-up, that we'll be having two public hearings tonight, the first of which will be simply for the annexation, and then the next one will be for the zoning. Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council on both the plan of services and the annexation petition. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. No presentation on this portion?
No, sir. I believe the applicant will have something before the zoning.
Okay. Any questions on this proposal?
Just one. I mean, is there any, patient of any road improvements with respects to Rucker Lane based upon the entire portion of Rucker Lane being annexed into the city?
As far as, you know, when I was looking at the study area, I was looking at, you know, there certainly would be an opportunity to extend the study area southwards along Rucker Lane, not with any private property, but with the right-of-way. But in just looking at what was, what was practical for this particular study area, I felt that this was an appropriate amount of Rucker Lane. As far as road improvements, Mr. Huddleston or Mr. Balachandra may wish to discuss those.
Good evening, Chairman Lam. Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. Mr. Halliburton, our capital improvement plan was approved about a year ago by the mayor and council, includes funding in year two. We're in year two for Rucker Lane. As a matter of practice, we review the capital improvement plans in the fall of every year and then bring those back to the mayor and council. And so our city managers ask the department heads to review the capital improvement plan for the next five years and make priority adjustments and those sorts of things. So we'll be relooking at Rucker Lane and other road projects that are on the one-year horizon for lending and execution. What I will tell you about the plans, we're at 100% on the plans. We have most of the right-of-way acquired, so it's really a matter of being ready to move this to construct, funding and construction. Best guess is probably 12 to 18 months on start of construction, and it's probably about an 18-month construction project.
I'd like to put Sam on the spot.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing pertaining to the annexation portion of this request only at this time. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments about the planning commission?
Make a motion. If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the third public hearing, it's a zoning application for approximately 6.3 acres located along Rucker Lane to be, to be zoned RS8 simultaneous with the annexation. Loz Bolden is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lam. This is the same property that we just considered for annexation. It's on the map in the turquoise color also. Property is 6.3 acres. The applicants have requested a zoning classification of RS8 simultaneous with its annexation. The RS8 zone allows a, allows single-family residential lots, a minimum of 8,000 square feet in size. The RS8 zone, using staff's rough formula of the maximum lot yield that 6.3 acres could generate absent any other environmental or other constraints, would be approximately 25 lots. Now, that's, that is, that's approximate based upon a formula that we use. The actual yield could be less, could be more. You know, we don't know without detailed plans being submitted before us. Adjacent to the subject property to the north are single-family residential subdivisions located in the unincorporated county. You see Meadowwood Drive. That's the Brownview Single Family Residential Subdivision. Directly to the west of the subject property is a large, single-family residential estate lot located in the county. And there's another one of those to the south of the subject property. To the southwest, a little bit further to the southwest, is the Kingdom Ridge Single Family Residential Subdivision, which is zoned PUD Planned Unit District. The Kingdom Ridge subdivision has lot sizes a minimum of 8, 10, 12, and 15,000 square feet. 15,000 square foot lots are around the perimeter of the Kingdom Ridge subdivision. Directly to the east, across Rucker Lane, is the Scottish Glen Single Family Residential Subdivision. You'll see it. Directly across Rucker Lane, it is zoned RS10, single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. To the northeast of the subject property is the Victory Station Planned Unit Development. That's a mixed-use planned unit development that was approved a number of years ago and has been amended several times since then. The frontage along Rucker Lane, you'll see where Swanholm Drive dead ends into, or stubs into, a parcel. Right now, that is zoned for townhomes and retail and what they call live-work units. But we do anticipate seeing, you know, that was zoned that way approximately nine years ago, and there hasn't been a whole lot of activity. So we do see, we do envision a, an amendment for that area forthcoming in the future, but that's what it's zoned for right now. The subject property is located in the study area of the general development plan for the Blackman Community. And that plan, the future land use map in that plan identifies the property as medium-density residential. And it defines medium-density residential as planned areas of single-family homes and attached or zero-lot line units with a permitted density range of four to eight units per acre and an appropriate zoning district of PRD, Planned Residential District. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Bolden has a brief presentation that he would like to give you before the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Loz Bolden. I'm a broker at Clark Maples Commercial Real Estate. I represent the Pavices, and as Matthew stated, they're here and can answer any questions should I not be able to answer them. The Pavices are, as stated, asking 6.2 acres be rezoned to RS8. In our attempts to lay the site out, that's 23 lots in two phases. The Pavices will be staying on approximately two acres or a little more than two acres while the first phase is developed. That breaks down into about 14 lots and eight lots, face, first phase and second phase. As Matthew stated, we're asking for the RS8, which is within the bounds of, I believe it's called the Blackman Study. Matthew, is that correct? We are extremely close to the commercial public shopping center. In fact, 1,100 feet away. We're almost across the street from Mr. Swanson's identity, which Matthew just described that hadn't been developed yet. We're asking for the RS8 not to try to get more lots or pack more lots on there. We're asking for the RS8 because that's what the market is telling us it wants. The buyers are wanting smaller lots, less headache. It's not to maximize dollars. It's really what our studies show is going to work best for the consumer. We also anticipate these homes... We also anticipate these homes to be in the range of 325 to 375. So the Paveses truly are the developers, not me. So, you know, we're not trying to pack a bunch of lots on there. They will be there for a while to come. So, like I said, we're about 1,100 feet from the public shopping center and 1,700 feet from a major highway, five-lane state highway. It's a natural progression in my mind that you would go from commercial to high-density to medium-density and so forth, so on. So myself and the Paveses believe that this is an appropriate request. And I did meet with the neighbors Saturday, so we did have a neighborhood meeting, and it was well-attended. Most of them are here, I think all of them are here and maybe some more, so. But Ms. Farie was nice enough to have us over to her house. I think there were 12 of them and one of me, and they didn't beat me up too bad. So I thought it was very productive. I thought we had an arrangement by the end of the meeting, but for whatever reason, it just did not end up materializing. I will try to turn this on, Matthew. Let's see. How do I get it? There we go. That's, you know, obviously a satellite image that's outlining the first phase, which would be the 13 or 14 lots. You can see pretty clearly Mr. Hoyt Owen's property in behind. You can see the Publix as well. I thought that was kind of important, to see the perspective, how everything fit together. Mr. Hoyt Owen is next door to the west with about 16 acres plus or minus, is that right? And then we have three lots truly adjacent to the north in the Brownview subdivision. Following our meeting, I came up with another drawing, which I thought was going to resolve the neighbors' issues, but apparently not. Let's see if I can get that to come up. Yeah, that, this drawing is not correct, but it does at least show where the home place is and how we'd be phasing that. The neighbors requested that there be as few a lots as possible on the north side. We've whittled that down to between six and seven. And along Hoyt Owen's property line, pretty much no matter how we divide it up, there's going to be four lots abutting Hoyt Owen's property. We believe it's the appropriate zone. We know it's what the market wants, and we respectfully request approval.
Mr. Bolden, what are your proposed restrictions, including?
Building materials, brick, stone, drive-it. We haven't resolved the first floor versus second, single-story versus two-story sizes. And what was the other restriction, Tab? 1,800 square feet or larger. We will also assure the neighbors that we would move the drainage to the south because it does tend to puddle in the northwest corner where there is a shared property line. I guess I can show that, but. So we agreed to pull the drainage to the south, reduce the lots along the shared north line down to six or seven, be happy to commit to only four lots facing Hoyt, if that'll get this resolved.
Are you envisioning this to be something like the villages at Merrymont and the new?
Merrymont Springs, very similar size, very similar product, slightly, probably a slightly smaller product in square footage, but very similar in looks and lot size.
Okay.
Our lots right now average, even though we're asking for an RS8 zone, they average 8,900 square feet.
Any other questions from Mr. Bolden?
Mr. Bolden, do you have any idea what the minimum square footage is in Scottish Glen?
I don't.
Okay.
I can find out.
Okay, if there's no other questions from Mr. Bolden, thank you.
Yeah. Will I be coming back up or not?
We may ask you for a, to revisit the podium, sir, after the public hearing.
Okay, okay.
After the public hearing, okay?
Thanks.
If there's questions, we need your addressing, okay? Okay, all that being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name's Hoyt Owen, and I live just to the west of this property. Mr. Lamb, members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, staff and guests, thank you for this opportunity to stand before you tonight once again and express our opinions for your consideration. Much has happened since our 2003 discussion on the Kingdom Ridge development. Some of it's, some of the things are better than others. The good part is that we've got growth, jobs, opportunities to live and work in a wonderful community. Certainly, God has blessed our beloved city. The not-so-good part is traffic, traffic and more traffic, congestion, congestion and more congestion, growth, growth and more growth. And this is what, and this is what brings us here tonight, the question of growth and quality of life. Obviously, everyone will and can offer opinions as to whether we are better off and at what price are we willing to pay for this level of our quality of life. My neighbor, Mr. and Ms. Paves, have been and are wonderful neighbors, and I wish them the very best as they make lifestyle changes. In an effort to downsize, they are requesting this annexation and rezoning of a portion of their land for the purpose of building houses, and certainly, they have a right to do this, as do all of us. But since this request will have an effect on myself and my other neighbors who live in the adjoining neighborhood, you have given us this opportunity to express our opinions, and I again thank you. The request for RS8 zoning allows for single-family housing on a minimum of 8,000 feet-foot lots. This concerns me due to the small lot size and the sheer number of lots on this small traffic, on this small track. Traffic is already a problem, and this zoning would only worsen the situation. I would suggest and remind you that when we met before on the Kingdom Ridge development, as been discussed earlier tonight, we had similar discussions, and a compromise was reached that would allow RS15 lots along adjoining county property, making it similar as possible to the existing county property that's there now. I would respectfully request that this type of design be continued for the property under consideration tonight. Second, I would like to ask for screening to be provided between adjoining property and this new development. Third, I would ask that proposed houses be brick with stone and hardy board trim allowances. One observation I made during the Kingdom Ridge development was that when I passed by the entrance there, they would have signs pointing brick houses. I did not see a single sign saying siding houses. And although Mr. Loz has proposed a combination of brick, stone, and I think he said drive-it, but I think he meant hardy board, there's no percentages given on what this would be. And again, making reference to the subdivision to the south, I believe those subdivisions are all PRD developments and PUD developments, and there's much more strict regulation and guidelines than what we're proposing for, if what, Mr. Loz is proposing for this development. Let's see, and the fourth thing I'd like to ask, that I would request that in the planning and design of this new development, consideration and allowances be made for the connectivity to my property. I would close with the assumption that planning and engineering by staff will address drainage concerns and the location of the street access to Rucker Lane. As the map showed earlier, it seemed like to me, and I think to our neighbors, my neighbors, that the most logical connection would be at the intersection of the, what's the name of that subdivision across from me?
Scottish.
Scottish Glen subdivision. I broke my notes down because, Mr. Lamb, I've had a tendency to forget things, and I don't, I know, I know, I'm running over.
Mr. Lamb.
I would also hope that driveway access not be permitted onto Rucker Lane, again, for safety reasons. I thank you for your willingness to allow us this opportunity to express our desires and opinions. You are a faithful and dedicated group of citizens that love this wonderful city as I do. I wish you and your families a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. It's been a while since we've seen you, so good to have you back up. Yes, sir. Anybody else? This is your opportunity. Y'all want to take a draw straws or anything? Anybody else like to speak at all? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pamela Farie. I live at 3433 Meadowwood, which is adjoining this property. Though, our backyard is the low spot of Paveses' property, and our concern with the drainage in that area is even though it's going to be directed back towards the Paveses' property, it naturally flows downhill. And our concern is, how are you going to flow that uphill to get it to the location that they're proposing for that drainage to be, rather than ponding? We already have a mosquito problem in the area, and it just seems like it's going to pond there and breed more.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Tabitha Bash, and I live at 3404 Meadowwood. And I live right on the corner of Meadowwood and Rucker, and out of this Brownview Acres subdivision. My house is the only one that has a driveway that exits onto Rucker, and I would just ask for consideration when Rucker Lane is widened, that something, maybe my driveway could be rerouted onto Meadowwood rather than onto Rucker. I have a very hard time getting out of the driveway at certain hours of the day. And right now, with the road being so narrow, I have to wait till there's no traffic at all because just getting out, I go into the opposite lane either way. So I'm just asking for consideration when the road is widened, that maybe there could be an allowance put in there for rerouting my driveway onto Meadowwood.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Last call. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bolden, you have a second, or Mr. Roundtree, if he's representing you, you might want to talk about drainage and connectivity. I think the map you showed us, it looked like it had a proposed connectivity back to Mr. Owen's property.
May I jump in here real quick? Yeah, Mr. Owen already has a permanent 30-foot access easement across the northern property line, so for whatever that's worth, he's got some connectivity already. And if we should provide that connectivity to Mr. Owen, that we, that he in turn released the 30-foot easement. Does that make sense?
Maybe.
Maybe.
As far as the drainage is concerned, the best way to address that, I think it's a concern that's been expressed, and obviously, we know it's something that has to be dealt with. I'm not as familiar with the grades currently, but we know in the site planning process, that'll be a major point of concern for two reasons. One is it's a developable lot that we need to make sure can drain, so we can use it to actually put a home on, but more importantly, that it's our responsibility to make sure that water's taken care of. So not knowing exactly what's going on, Mr. Lamb, as far as the exact grades, I just know it's something we'll address in site plan.
Basically, assure the neighbors as far as what the law on the drainage situation is.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll be sure to do that.
Well, now, tell them what it is. You can't drain off property. You can't drain more onto them than what's already coming.
Correct. Yeah, we can't increase the drainage situation that currently exists, but a lot of times, what we found in terms of development, a lot of the concerns you have can be addressed more and more refining, that a lot of the drainage concerns are a result of old plans and old situations. And when new development comes in, there's a chance to mitigate and to compensate for a lot of the issues that are currently there. But it is our responsibility to make sure any water that's on the property stays on our property. We treat that correctly, so you should be in good shape there. But again, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly the situation, but there are protocol within the, the next process that this is approved is to go through a site planning process, and that has to go through a very rigorous process with the city staff to make sure drainage is addressed.
Chairman Lamb, in the plan of services, our engineering department did analyze the drainage on the property and indicated that the western portion of the study area drains to a closed depression on the adjacent property, and the eastern portion drains to the Rucker Lane right-of-way. I don't think that they identified any major issues with the future development of the property. Mr. Huddleston on our staff is the one who reviewed that during the annexation process. If you have any, if you need any additional information on the drainage.
Mr. Bolden, when you come back with a site plan, I'm sure you'll address a connectivity.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Owens and everybody else.
Yes, sir. Whatever planning staff requires of us, happy to do.
Chairman Lamb, one thing that I would mention is that the plan that Mr. Bolden showed the neighbors and the plan that he showed, that he presented to you tonight is purely conceptual in nature right now. This is not a planned development, so the layout, you know, where he's showing driveways and connectivity, you know, all of that is yet to be determined. I don't know that any, that any detailed engineering analysis of the property has been made by his engineering firm. I think it's just kind of his good-faith effort to show you how he envisions the development of the property, but that may, that may change by the time, if you approve this zoning request, by the time that gets back to you via a preliminary plat.
Just so I understand, we talked about a 30-foot easement that Mr. Owen had, so what you're saying is that doesn't obligate the connectivity to that particular easement? I don't follow that exactly.
Well, I think, I think that's something that Mr. Bolden and Mr. Owen would have to work out between now and the time they submit plans. According to Mr. Bolden, and I haven't seen the documents, Mr. Owen owns an access easement along the very northernmost portion of the property. Mr. Owen, by nodding your head, would you agree with that? And of course, that would not lend itself very well to the development of property because Mr. Bolden, I'm sure, does not want to put a public road along that easement at the very northern portion of the property. So if the zoning goes through and Mr. Bolden and Mr. Paves develop the property, the location of that access to Mr. Owen's property is something that they'd have to work out. Whether or not Mr. Owen wishes to shift that access location, that would be a private property matter that they'd have to work out.
I think, ma'am, I think all we're saying is we don't want to have it, the whole track just eaten up with access for Mr. Owen. I mean, if we're going to have a street, let's make that the access. If we're not going to stub a street off at his place, then let's leave the 30 feet there. So just not both.
Okay. Well, if this, if this... Well, if this, if this project is approved and is, is built, if it's of the same quality as a similar project in Merrymont Springs, it's a very high-quality and very desirous neighborhood, very, very nice homes, and they can be an asset to the area.
So can I ask, so what is that section of Merrymont? Is that a, is it all a planned development?
It's a, I think that's a PRD.
I remember all the different sections. We're all planned development.
Their lot size might actually be a little less than eight thousand square feet.
I think they're, at their smallest, they're about fifty-two by one forty, so yeah, they're smaller than eight thousand.
Any other questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
Just one, if my math's correct, based upon the Blackman study, I think we said, or it was cited, that that study looked for four to eight units per acre, and if we, if this has twenty-three lots proposed, it's about three point seven, so that's, that's less than even what the study was originally talking about.
Yeah, the RSA zone would be on the, on the low-density end of what the Blackman plan would recommend.
Right, okay. And then just one other comment that, Mr. Owen did speak to screening. I guess we could comment on that residential butts up against residential, and there wouldn't necessarily be specific requirements with respects to screening. I mean, I'm making a comment, but I'm asking a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Halliburton, our zoning ordinance does not require landscape screening or any other kind of screening when single-family uses abut other single-family uses. That's something that Mr. Bolden could voluntarily, he could voluntarily, you know, we've seen this on other, in other subdivisions, where they voluntarily place like a landscape preservation easement or a tree preservation easement adjacent to an existing development, but that would be something that he would do voluntarily. It would not be something that the city would require as a matter of ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? And for the lady that had comments on her driveway being reshifted, that really doesn't apply to this application, but what I would suggest is that you talk to Mr. Sam Huddleston back here, and he'll be glad to hear your concerns and talk to you about the feasibility of something like that, okay? Thank you for bringing that up.
And can I just comment that, you know, I mean, just when I looked at this originally, you know, and what it is in all the surrounding areas, you know, I, I was very uncomfortable with a straight RSA zoning as opposed to a planned development, when we've got RSA ten, RSA fifteen. The planned development to the southwest has fifteen thousand square foot lots abut, abutting all these properties. And so I, I think, you know, it's just been a long time since we've had straight zoning, and you have to get comfortable with that again, I guess, so I'm, I'm struggling with it, I'll just say that.
So what you're saying is you would prefer a PRD?
I would prefer a PRD if I want RSA for...
Mr. Bolden?
Yes, can possibly some of these things be handled on the plat, such as buffers and protecting existing landscape and...
It's more about that you have certain plans and ideas for the property, but say something happens and two years from now, you sell it just like it is, and the next person comes in and it's zoned RSA, and they don't build three hundred and twenty-five thousand to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar houses on there in the middle of all of these other much larger lots. And that, that's more what, where my concern is. If, if you are going to get to build and do exactly what you say you're going to get to build and do, the world is a great place, but when things don't happen like we expect them to, and if we hadn't been burned on that before, I wouldn't have these concerns. But we've been burned on that before.
We, we're hoping that we can kind of achieve everything without actually going through the planned unit development. I mean, twenty thousand dollars on a six, six-acre transaction is really a lot for the Paveys. I, I have no ownership interest in this.
And you need the RSA versus an RSA ten?
No, I mean, if that would resolve the matter, we would be happy with RSA ten as well, but if that resolves the PUD issue, I guess I would say.
I mean, at least that's just, it's what's across the street.
Yes.
It's not what's on three sides of it.
We would also, like I said, I, I can say with all certainty and codify it in any way you would like, there won't be more than four lots facing Hoyt, and, and I will point out, he's a quarter of a mile away to his front door, but we're actually closer to Publix than we are Hoyt. But, you know, I, I suggest that we're really not going to expose Mr. Owen to any more than he already is. In fact, the fifteen thousand square foot lots to his south are a hundred foot in width, and so we would actually have fewer lots facing Hoyt than, than as if we were to use the exact same layout that's on the south of him. But, so we, we just request that if there's any way to work around going, coming back with a PUD, it's not the time, or it's really just the money and the time, but...
I'm just coming, so...
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm, I'm kind of following where Kathy is in the sense that it doesn't look like it's where it should be with an RSA surrounded by RSA fifteens and RSA tens, and, and, and I get the part of where our city needs more density and what the demand is, and I absolutely understand what your intentions are of saying we need more density, because I think that's actually a good thing. And it's really not the quantity of product that's put on this property, it's the quality of the product that's put on this property. And I, my concern is to make sure that the quality of the product, and, and I don't know that just giving a straight zoning will achieve that goal. I, I think that...
Will guarantee the goal.
Yeah, right, because, and it's not that you don't have the best intentions in the world, but, but who knows what later down the road might happen if the property were to change hands a time or two, and, and, and from the city council side of it, have seen a couple of situations where the best of intentions, and I think the person was being completely honest with us when they said, this is what we intend to do, but things changed. And so I do think that it's, it's very difficult to approve this with, without a PRD or something that would, that would more ensure the quality of the product, because I, the restrictive covenants, I mean, they're good, but they're not enforceable by the city, and, and that kind of leaves the surrounding community on the hook of saying, you didn't do what you said you were going to do, whereas with a PRD, it's got to be done as, as, as presented. And so I just think that that gives everybody an, an insurance and a, a quality of product that, that they could walk out of here with and say, we're comfortable and we know what's going to happen there. And I'm not sure that, with what you've presented tonight, that I could assure the, the neighbors around there that they would be getting that assurance.
Whether it be this, this request or the next, I would just ask that the planning in the city maybe think about how this, for smaller tracks be handled in the future. It just gets real...
I think that's what he's telling you. He's much more comfortable with a PRD approach.
Yeah, I was just saying, is there any middle ground? I mean, is there something between a full-blown PUD submittal and a, a straight zone, so that there's not twenty thousand dollars worth of drawings and engineering and photographs in advance? Is there, and I'm just throwing that out there. I, I don't suppose that's going to happen tonight.
Excuse me, it would be good if there was, but there really isn't. State law does not allow us to do contract zoning, although they do allow us, of course, to do the planned developments, which are very close to that, but they're, but it's different. So it, with what we're left with is straight zoning, and as Mr. Smotherman said, the problem with the best of intentions of restrictive covenants still are not enforceable by, by the city, and generally difficult to enforce by other, usually it's only the residents in that area, not the surrounding neighbors, who are the ones who are, are concerned. It would be good if we had more flexibility, but I don't see where we have a middle ground on something like this.
I, I just, I'm here in this discussion, I do have a comment, and, and I agree with Eddie and Kathy with respects to the fact that PRD would give more restrictions and the end result would be exactly what is on that plan. But I dare say that in the last several months, that we have approved blanket zoning when adjacent properties are in, of similar zone.
Right.
As a matter of fact, we had a similar discussion with commercial development in the, the Gateway last Planning Commission meeting, with respects to, we did a blanket zoning, even though we, and then we talked about the covenants that that developer would be having on that property to be able to control what happened. So I'm of the opinion that if, if they're willing to compromise to an RSA ten zoning, and that is something similar that is adjacent to this property, that I would be for that, because I think that we have leant lately towards blanket zoning when it was similar to what was adjacent to the surrounding properties. That's the comment that I would make.
Yeah, and, and Ken, I, I agree with you, except for the fact that we don't even know where the easement going across this property is going to be to, to Grant Hoyt, the property. And so I, I think we're a ways away from being able to look at the property and say, even if it's an RSA ten, I, I agree with you, if it was RSA ten, I'd probably be leaning more that direction, but I, I'm certain that the neighborhood does not want a roadway going across the northern line of this property
Right.
which is what he owns and, and has access to. So it just seems a little premature for us to be talking about, you know, a, a drawing that basically looked like it was on the back of a napkin, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Right.
But, 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 but it's just not substantial enough for us to make an approval when we're talking about how much investment that these people on Meadowwood Drive have invested into their property, and, and, and say that it's okay for us to just say an RSA eight or an RSA ten even would back up to somehow, we, we don't even know how it would back up or how it would direct into that roadway if that easement were permitted to be on the northern line of the property. How, how would you lay the property out? We, we, you know, I, I realize that there is a site plan in the future that will probably answer those questions, but once we've approved it, then it is what it is, and, you know, and I'm just, I'm afraid that should the property trade, change hands two or three times, that even still, you don't have any commitments as to what the quality of the product would be. You know, just if somebody come in there and built nothing but houses with hardy board, even if they're RSA ten, I don't think it fits in with the character of the neighbors that they have surrounding them. But, but I do appreciate the conversation about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I believe, though, that when we, you know, again, it's just been a long time since we've done all this blanket zoning, but normally, if it was going to be RSA ten, we wouldn't see a plan at the time we're zoning it.
Right.
So it's not really our, I mean, if they've got a thirty-foot easement on there, they got to work that out and figure out how that's going to work, and figure out how they could, you know, make it, make it work and make Mr. Ho, Mr. Owen happy. You know, he's got the easement, so they're going to have to work with that some way, but how they get it worked, you know, if we're doing a straight zoning, that's not something that we have to see at this point. If we're happy with RSA ten, then we're happy with RSA ten. They have to make it work within that. And, and I, since the RSA ten is directly across the street, I do think it's a compatible zoning at RSA ten. Couldn't go all the way to RSA eight, I just wouldn't feel comfortable with that, but I can get comfortable with RSA ten straight zone.
Okay, the proposal is for RSA, and that's the application. So we need to make a motion pertaining to this proposal, or unless the developer is willing to amend that request.
We are willing to amend and, and make the request an RSA ten as opposed to an RSA.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Counselor, are you okay?
I am.
Okay.
But again, I think Planning Commission has the ability to approve this as an RSA ten, and if they won't accept that, then they'll come back with something else. If they don't like the, I mean, I, I don't know that they have to agree to the RSA ten. I think the Planning Commission has the ability to approve it.
In this case, he's changed his application, though.
It's good that he said he would, and I don't think we'll have the issue tomorrow, but if, if you, if the commission's not willing to approve an RSA eight and does vote to approve it as an RSA ten, then it'll be up to them to comply with that, come forward or start over with something else.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve as RSA ten.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
One opposition. Motion carries. This will still have to go before the plant, the city council. So folks, if you'll have another opportunity to speak in another public hearing pertaining to this, Mr. Owen, sharpen your skills, you'll have another shot, so...
Do you have to?
As much as any of them, yes, sir. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Staff reports another business, Ms. Green.
Sir, I do have other business I'd like for you to consider, and I'm bringing it to you as other business, because I, when the developer approached me, I felt fairly confident that it would be something that you would not be opposed to, and because it's a project that's currently under development, and it's for the Gateway Corner Project, which is a part of the Waterstone Development, it's actually located on the corner of Medical Center Parkway. And this project came to you for both initial and final design review and approval, and you gave it such, but when it came to you for initial design review, they showed an outdoor patio, and that's the area on this, you have the plans laid out before you, but also on the screen, so it's the area that's right next to the building on your screens before you. And then when they took it to final, they took that area off of the plans. And so when it got final design review, final design approval and site plan approval, that wasn't on the plans. This is in the Gateway, which requires Planning Commission approval. Ordinarily, something like this, we would do administrative, but because it's in Gateway, it does require Planning Commission approval. So now they've come back and they said, this building's under construction, say, oh, no, you know, who we thought was going to be a tenant is no longer going to be a tenant. It's important to, to put this back. They're thinking it could be an outdoor-like patio for, because it's a multi-tenant building. And so I had Mr. Moulson, who's here to submit the plans to me for you to review and consider. They've submitted details of the pavers that are going to be there, and that's on page L three point O, which is the last sheet of the, of the big handle that you have, and of the fencing and the umbrellas and the benches in that area. And if, I guess, are you willing to consider this tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Are you adding it back or does...
Adding it back.
Okay.
Good question.
I was so confused.
In light of this, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for hearing this tonight. As Margaret Ann talked about, this has came before you about a year ago, went through initial design review in December, and then final design review in January with approval on the overall project itself. In between the initial approval and our subsequent resubmittal for final design review, our clients had a change in the, in the users that were planning on using the, the lower floor of this building. Initially, the concept was that on that corner where we're showing the patio again today was to be some kind of restaurant to activate that corner, and then medical or some kind of office pieces, you know, utilizing the rest of that first floor. But in the process of going through, trying to find end users for this, the, they did have a client come along who wanted the entire first floor for medical office-type stuff. So that's where the plaza or the patio outside went away in between you guys approving it with initial, and then the subsequent final design review, it was not there when you approved at that point in time. It came back to us in June that that end user ended up falling off, so they went back to Plan A and wanted to... So they went back to Plan A and wanted to continue moving forward with having a restaurant on the corner, which would then allow us to utilize, using that patio again. Margaret Ann felt it'd be best, since it is part of the GTO, that it does come back to you guys to get reapproval of this outdoor patio.
Well, to get approval, because it never got approval. Initial design approval, but never final.
Okay, any questions?
So it was there at initial design review, it was gone at final design.
Correct.
And now it's back.
Reappearance.
Yes. I like saying yes.
Looks nice.
If no questions, I make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Ms. Green, do you have anything else?
No, I...
Mr. Lewis, have we all met our educational requirements? So we're good for another, for the rest of this year, huh?
Yes.
Okay. The rest of this year. Started back in January. Mr. Blomley, anything else?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder of our special meeting on Monday at eleven AM in room two eighteen to discuss the North Highland Plan.
Okay.
Look forward to seeing you all there.
I have no further business.
Bless you.
Anything else?
There's no further business, we stand adjourned.